It is six o'clock on Thursday, July 20th, and I will call this City of Lacey City Council Meeting to Order. For all those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It looks like we have Mayor Ryder is unable to attend tonight, and we also have Councilmember Stedman not present with us tonight. And with that, can I get a motion for our agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as posted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously.
We have to vote.
Oh, sorry, we have to vote. Right, we're using civic clerk.
[inaudible]
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Sorry. Moving on. First item on our agenda, which appears to be a little bit short of an agenda tonight, so public recognitions, and we don't have any, and then public comment, there is, there was no, no one registered to, to comment online, and there was no written comment as of yet. Is there anyone in this chamber wishing to address this council? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item. And under referral from Planning Commission.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there, there is somebody.
Oh.
Oh, would you? Okay. We will hear from Martin Hoppy, our Transportation Manager, on Resolution Number 1134, our Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known as the TIP. You're up first, Martin.
Evening, Council. Tonight, we're recommending approval of the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. This is a state and federal requirement. Got the summary up on the board. It's a list of projects that we expect to start in the next six years. The main purpose is to track state and federal funds, identify regionally significant project, and we just talked earlier on that, that regionally significant means that it can be modeled in the TRPC's regional model, so intersections or just a turn lane or something like that doesn't apply. And it's also the foundation for mitigation list. All projects need to be consistent with the comprehensive transportation plan. The Planning Commission held a hearing on May 16th, and we received no comments, and the Planning Commission approved it. We are making, we do not have any changes to projects, none removed or added. First time this has ever happened. But we did make two changes to the projects. Next slide, please. The first one is the College Street Corridor Phase Three, which is the 16th Avenue Roundabout. Basically, last year, what we did is we assumed that we got the Raze Grant, which we found out late June, we did not. But we were lucky enough to get TRPC's right-of-way grant, so most of it has been funded. We added a little bit more with the CRP funding just recently. And I added that, I didn't have the CRP funding in yet, but the original one is, and we're assuming that we're going to go for the Raze Grant again next year. I think we got about five or six years before we could, that we could apply for it. They keep telling us it's a great project, so we're just going to keep going with it. The other one, next slide, is the Campus Glen and Willamette Roundabout. I don't know if you remember, last year, I said I made a mistake on this one, that they had the redistributed funds, and I did not expect to get it two years ago, so I just put that out as its own project. And I was expecting to take it off, I didn't think anybody'd give up money. So I just added, so we obligated the PE phase, we're getting that started with the consultant, and so I added back in the right-of-way construction phase. Next slide, please, is the mitigation list. We didn't add any changes to the projects on that list either. There was a 2% construction cost index, cost increase, so I added that to the total project costs, and it's just basically a formula after that. That does put, that is important, that puts a new residential cap at 2,371 per single-family residence. And be happy to answer any questions.
See you, manager.
Mr. Chair, would you like us to ask questions first, or make the motion and then ask questions?
Let's, let's get into a motion so that we can get into a discussion. Can I get a motion for?
Sure. I would move to approve Resolution 1134, adopting the 2024 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program and the Transportation Improvement mitigation list.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion.
So I, I was talking to Martin earlier, but I wanted to share for folks that are tuning in from home or here in the audience, that Lacey also has a pedestrian and bike plan that was put together to try to increase the number of trips happening in our community that are on foot or on bike or some mode besides cars. And I was really, I started cross-comparing the plans for large projects that are in this TIP. Many of them, we've already approved, so they're not changes, we're just sort of reapproving. But when I was cross-referencing with the bike plan recommendations for things that could really move us forward on increasing pedestrian and bike travel in the community, and these TIP projects, I was pleased to see that a lot of the things recommended in the bike plan are actually in the TIP already. So some of these large federal projects where we're, you know, increasing the number of lanes, we're also using that opportunity to add sidewalks and add bike paths in some of our more dangerous or highly trafficked intersections. So I wanted to call that out, because I don't know that folks know that we're doing that, but we are taking these opportunities to add sidewalks, which is something we've heard from the community we should be doing.
Awesome. Is there anybody else? Okay, well, it has been moved and seconded. The fact that there's no changes is, is interesting, and these, these projects I know can take 10, 15 years, in some cases.
Thirty.
Or thirty. And right-of-way acquisition. I didn't remember if the College Street was, was one of the projects, our extension of College Street from, to 15th?
Since it was, it's not on the TIP anymore, because it was fully funded with TIB, so once it's obligated, we take it off the TIP.
Okay. Well, it has been moved and seconded, and we've discussed it, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, well, I guess, give the clerk a moment for voting. Yeah, good. Okay. Next on our agenda, under resolutions, since we've gone into Resolution Number 1134, our Six-Year TIP, and then next, we have Resolution Number 1135, being presented by our city attorney, Dave Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, council members. Resolution Number 1135 is a familiar topic. I came before this council about a month ago, and the council passed at the time Resolution 1133, which set a public hearing to, for the council to consider the vacation of certain unopened right-of-way. There was, one of the means of notifying the public via the city's website wasn't posted in a time that I felt was better safe than sorry. I wanted to, to reset that public hearing so we could ensure that there's no debate as to whether or not there was enough notice. Notice was mailed, notice was posted at the site, notice was posted at City Hall, it was published in the newspaper. We're going to do that again. We've also notified the homeowners, they will be further notified. So what the action for the council tonight is, is to approve Resolution 1135 to set a hearing date of August 17th for the consideration of the vacation. So happy to answer any questions for council, but this was fully briefed about a month ago.
Move to approve Resolution Number 1135, unopened right-of-way vacation public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, just one question. So notice, most of the methods of notification did already go out, so will they have to be redone, then we'll have to mail again and all of that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's got a new date, so that is the reason you have to mail it again, right?
Correct.
And so that will be in August, we'll revisit that.
Seventeenth.
And in this, in this, are we just looking to see if anybody has any objection, and if, without any?
Well, we're providing, we're setting a public hearing with the passage of this resolution, the council is setting a public hearing, and that's going to be an opportunity for any testimony, either in favor or against. There'll be an opportunity for city staff to offer, the city staff's perspective, and of course, any citizens that wanted, want to object would need to provide that in written form to the council prior to that date.
Is there anything further on this matter? Okay, well, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously, and we have adopted Resolution Number 1135. Next item on our agenda, it looks like nothing on the city manager's report this.
There's no city manager's report.
There is no city manager's report, then we will move straight into standing general committees, starting with the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Councilman Greenstein.
Yes. I will give that report, since the mayor is not available today. We had a meeting of the Finance Committee on June 27th, it was a three-item agenda. First on the agenda was the electric vehicle charging rate policy. So we discussed several different options for how we would charge for the charging stations that are owned by the city, the ones here at City Hall and a few other places. This will come before council at a future date, but we were looking at options anywhere from there being no fee, all the way up to full recovery of all of the cost of both the power and the, the equipment itself. So that'll be coming before council at a future date. We also received an update on the city's tuition reimbursement program. Currently, we budget $10,000 a year for this. At this time, staff feels it's adequate. We did advise city manager that if in fact it would have become not adequate, they didn't think it was enough to please come back to us, because we do think council would be open to discussing additional funding if needed for that, so. And then last on the agenda was the discussion of the 2024 budget calendar. The city manager is scheduled to present the budget on the October 19th meeting, with public hearings on 11/2 and 11/16, and then final budget adoption would be scheduled for December 21st. And that is my report.
You know what, I couldn't remember how much reimbursement that we had actually done in the, in the last fiscal.
Currently, to date, it's just over $5,000 in tuition reimbursements for, I think it's three employees that have gone on for, for their education. And so we have about just under $5,000 left for the rest of the year, and with fall quarter coming up, and the timeline when they need to submit their requests is in advance of the fall quarter, we should know by the first of August if we have any additional requests going into, how much that is, and if there is more than what we have left, we can bring it forward in our 2023 budget amendment proposal. 2023 budget amendment proposals in September for council to take a look at.
So if we, if we go over, what, are we, are we going to need an amendment? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes. If we have, going in, in the next couple of weeks, we have requests for tuition reimbursement that exceed what we have up budget for this year, we'll include it in this year's budget amendment in September.
Excellent.
Sorry, I just mentioned this, Rick, but is there a, a cap on how much an individual can request?
There is. And I'd have to go back and, and look at the words, that I can get that information for. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, moving on. Land Use and Environmental Committee meeting. Is that Councilmember Stedman? I'm sorry. That's Councilmember Cox. My apologies.
No worries. Okay. Land Use and Environment Committee met on June the 27th. We had a two-item agenda. The one that took the most time and attention was amendments to Lacey Municipal Code 2.30 concerning hearing examiner process. Grant Beck, our Planning and Development Services Manager, walked us through some proposed amendments to this, which actually was approved. A lot of this is housekeeping, but it does open the door for another look at the hearing examiner process that this council has talked about before. So more to come on that. We also got an update on land use from Senior Planner Sarah Schelling, who took a look at legislation impacting land use that was approved during the most recent legislative session. It included things on what's called middle housing, accessory dwelling units, use of existing buildings, condos and townhouses, et cetera. And then we also got an update on the energy efficiency rebate program that we're going to be partnering with Puget Sound Energy on, in which Lacey will use its climate mitigation funding to match a rebate that PSE may offer for buying an energy-efficient appliance for weatherizing your house, et cetera. So Lacey residents would essentially get a double rebate. And this is part of our ongoing climate work to incentivize people to weatherize their homes and make it more affordable for them to reduce their energy consumption.
Carolyn, can I add something to that? Just only to add that if folks do purchase an energy-efficient appliance and they're eligible for the PSE funding, they don't have to fill out a secondary application. They just automatically get it from the city as well. So we're trying to make it really easy for people to access that benefit.
Thank you so much for adding that footnote. I appreciate it. That's land use.
Thank you. And up next, we have Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee meeting. I know that, that Stedman chairs that meeting, I believe. And so maybe we won't have a report on that tonight unless another participant of that meeting would like to, to deliver. And we can go on to utilities and come back to that one. All right. All right, let's go on to our Utilities Committee meeting.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So Utilities met July 3rd. The one-item agenda concerned the Dram Road annexation. City has received a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings with the company called Threes Company LLC. The filing of the notice is a first step in the annexation process under the petition method. It requires a petition filed by property owners representing a minimum of 10% of the valuation of the area proposed for annexation. Long story short, we have an area proposed for annexation, primary located within the Pleasant Glade Planning Area and within Lacey Urban Growth Area west of Judd Street, north of 15th, and south of the existing Cuyo Park grounds. So this will be brought to the full council at a later time. Any questions?
Seeing none. If we, it's possible, if it's possible, we can go back to Community Relations, or we can, if somebody wants to deliver. If not, we can move on.
I'll go ahead and do it. That's fine. Community Relations also met July 3rd, and the topic of conversation was the land acknowledgement policy, formal statements to recognize and pay tribute to, express gratitude for our ongoing relationship between indigenous people and the land, help raise awareness of indigenous histories, perspectives, and experiences. So I believe we're going to have more to follow on that one. That was the essence of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I think we voted to bring that before the full council.
Yes, we did.
Yep.
Thank you for that report. Next on our agenda, Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. The mayor is usually up first. He is not here, so we will be moving on. And I am next. Just a, I didn't really have a whole lot. I haven't had, the EDC hasn't met. LTAC actually got canceled. And the Thurston Thrives hasn't met since my last report. I have had a couple of EDC meetings, but there, there's just a couple items there. The Ag Park in, in, to Nino is kind of a big deal. And the funding for that has, has come through. And those two buildings, the permits have come through, and the footings are being poured on those buildings next week. So those will be on time, on schedule. And that's about all I can say about that one. But Multicare has their, their women's clinic opening next week on the 25th. Everybody's invited to attend. Pretty awesome facility over in Olympia. And that is my report. Councilmember Cox.
This has been kind of a light month for meetings. The LOT, Clean Water Alliance, did not meet, and the Regional Housing Council did not meet. The Executive Committee for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Group did meet in late June, and we're going to meet again on Monday. The, the major item up for discussion on that is interlocal, a new interlocal agreement, now that we are proposing to restructure the organization a bit, to make the Citizens and Advisory Group and what we call our tech team, which is staff from each of the jurisdictions that supports this agency. They will be meeting more frequently. And the Executive Committee, which consists of elected officials representing each of the jurisdictions, will fall back into more of a policy-setting role and meet three times a year, plus a retreat. So we'll become more, as I say, policymakers and less trying to pull the plane while we're flying it, so to speak. So that interlocal agreement will come before council once, once it's ready. We also had a retreat in June where we tried to center on a single action, and we ended up, I think, with a combining one. We agreed as a group that the built environment is the largest source of carbon emissions in Thurston County. And so attacking that is, makes the most sense in terms of trying to reduce carbon emissions. So there's, we agreed as a group to work collaboratively on developing a model ordinance that would require, when somebody sells a home, that they have an energy audit done, so that any, the new buyer then can be aware of any deficiencies and perhaps take steps to address it. I'm, I'm hoping that eventually we can get complementary funds to help rehabilitate houses for those who need it. And there's a second piece to it, Rick, and my memory is kind of fuzzy on it, but it will come forward with the interlocal agreement. But it, it again, there, these are, these are small steps, and that doesn't, they're only, this is what we're agreeing to work on as a collective body. Lacey has its own thing going, as you heard about the Puget Sound Energy Rebate Program, and our efforts to do, replace streetlights with LED lights and other efforts that Lacey is making, and the other jurisdictions can make on their own, too. So, there you have it.
Can I, do you mind if I ask one quick question?
Please do.
So an energy audit on the sale of a home, is, is it, is it, is this something that's suggested, or is this something that, that is going to be, you know, pushed for a mandatory thing? Or how's?
I'm looking at developing a model ordinance that each of the jurisdictions can act upon. And if it is passed, it will be a required step in the process, just like any other permit review or other piece of transaction.
And that would be on the transfer of title, that this, this audit would happen? Or just on the sale? Okay, sorry. I, I apologize, too, because.
I'm assuming that would come before.
It'll come before.
It would.
It would. And there's a lot, I think this is an idea and a, and a strategy. It's been talked about in the climate action circles regionally, and in the plans. And then it's a matter of how you put together for, you know, a structure for not only compliance, but also enforcement. And so all those details would come forward, but it'd probably be similar to a home inspection that's already done through the Realtor Services, hiring that qualified home inspector to go on and look at.
So home inspection is, is a private inspection that is not mandated when you're purchasing real estate. What we're talking about is mandating an energy audit for every home that goes on the market. And that's not going to go over well with the housing market. That's going to be a real tough call.
And when it comes before this council, we'll discuss it in, in depth. Have, have other jurisdictions been, been briefed on this and kind of looking at this?
Through the, you know, Executive Committee, we, we started the initial conversations at the retreat. So it, it's a while out. And, I mean, this is kind of the time when our, our council and the other jurisdictions can start having conversations that would shape what that would look like, answer some of the questions that, that you've raised. So this is all very beginning steps. But it's, but it's also trying to help position Thurston County to be in place for when the larger state regulations on energy consumption come down. And then I think this will position us pretty well to be able to, to meet those mandates.
And as we, you know, try to reduce our carbon footprint and try to meet the state's projections and guidelines, we'll probably hear even more ideas and thoughts of what can be done, what should be done, and, and these types of things.
And, and Grant Beck, who's on virtually, has his hand raised. I don't think he can add also to some of that process coming forward, if you also would like to hear from Grant.
I would love to hear from Grant.
Please.
I'm going to be really rude to not turn my video on, because I've got a cat sitting in my.
We can barely hear you.
Right, your audio's very quiet.
Your audio's too quiet.
Is that better?
It's fuzzy. It's almost.
All right, one moment.
There you are.
Okay. I just wanted to add, too, that I don't think the, the group actually landed on going immediately to a mandatory inspection program. There's a lot to do between now and then. And there was some pushback from some of the Citizens Advisory Work Group on making it mandatory right out of the gate, or at all, for the very reasons that were expressed by the deputy mayor and, and Councilmember Kunkel. So I think that, that's not a decision that even has been made at the steering committee level at this point. And really, what we'll be focusing on is what an inspection program would look like, what really we're trying to do to inform potential purchasers of the total cost of ownership, and then figure out how to, how to encourage it to happen at this point. Councilmember Cox, did I clarify that correctly?
You did. You said it much better than I did, so thank you, Grant.
I, I think, I think we're probably going to hear more ideas on how to reduce and how to, to clean up. And so here's one, and I'm sure there's, there's probably going to be plenty others coming at us.
Plenty others. And the regional climate mitigation meetings are open to the public, so anybody who wants to listen in on those is certainly welcome to do so.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry to, to drag out your report. I didn't mean to do that. I just, it was a very interesting subject for me.
I'm not surprised at those reactions.
Is that the end of your report? Okay. Councilmember Greenstein?
Just two very quick reports. Thurston County Medic One EMS met on July 19th, yesterday. And really, just one major issue of note, and that is, we unanimously approved the budget for 2425. It is a two-year budget, because the county works in annual budgets. And then one that I don't normally report on, but I just want to make note of one thing here. I chair the Left One Disability Board. That's Law Enforcement Officers and Firefighters Disability Board. And we did, normally, like I said, don't report on this, but we did appoint a new member to that, to that board. Ed Poehl is the new citizen rep on that board. So I did want to just make that announcement. And that is my report.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Kunkel.
I have no report.
Councilmember Vasquez.
This meeting's flying by. Well, don't worry. I have a report. No report for ORCA. I wasn't able to attend their last meeting, except celebration was in order because they paid off the lease on the building that they occupy. So that's exciting for them as a self-sustaining organization. There was no Board of Health meeting in July, so I'll catch you up in August with what's going on with the Thurston County Board of Health. I wasn't able to attend the Inter-City Transit Authority meeting last night, but I did attend a full-day zero-emissions workshop on July 12th, where I got to learn every possible thing you could imagine about different kinds of electric and hydrogen-fuel cell bus technology. So Inter-City Transit coordinated with several different contractors that they've been partnering with to explain everything, the science behind battery electric buses, the distance that different models can go, how quickly they, they charge up, how much the batteries cost, how much it costs to upgrade the fleet. And they gave us the same information for hydrogen-fuel cell. And I think the important thing to take away is that Inter-City Transit does intend to move towards zero emissions. The target, I think, is 2045, but they actually could get there by 2036, which isn't really that far off. It's going to be a significant investment, not only to replace the buses and, you know, purchase batteries, if we purchase batteries, or install fuel cells, purchase those buses, but also to update the infrastructure, because you have to have a way to either pump power to charge the batteries, or deliver hydrogen. And that's kind of a tall order. We don't have a lot of sourcing options for hydrogen at this time, and most of the hydrogen produced in the United States is not clean. It's actually created by burning methane, which creates the byproduct of CO2. But CO2 is actually much better, or not as bad for the environment as methane. Methane's about 14 times worse for the environment than CO2, which is something I learned on the 12th. So lots more to come. This is a long horizon for this project that Inter-City Transit's embarking on, but expect more conversations to happen, because they haven't decided yet what mix of either electric buses or hydrogen-fuel cell buses they're going to lean into. Because it appears that we can't get all the way to zero emissions for Inter-City Transit by 2045 with only electric buses. We probably will need some mix of electric buses and hydrogen-fuel cell. So that was incredibly interesting. That was time well spent, I think. My other update is on the Thurston Regional Planning Council. We had a couple of different presentations, including from the Department of Transportation. They gave us information about the project to upgrade I-5 between Tumwater and Mounts Road. This is another one of those projects that is, you know, 15, 20, 30 years out, because it's very large, but we need to make sure that I-5 doesn't fall into the water. Maybe that's putting too fine a point on it. But we had an update on the Planning and Environmental Linkages Study. That's a part of the requirements, if we're going to get federal funding to fix that section of I-5, and that is marching along really well. And then we also had an update on the Carbon Reduction Program, which is a new grant program, providing funding for local jurisdictions to do projects that reduce carbon emissions. So the good thing for Lacey is that TRPC decided to allocate some of that new funding to Lacey, and specifically to our Lacey College Corridor Improvement Project Phase 3, which was on the tip that we heard about earlier. So we got some additional funding from TRPC to do some of those carbon reduction-related things, like building sidewalks or building bike paths, and to the tune of $210,000. Last thing, the Thurston County Bike Map hasn't been updated in Hasn't Been Updated In A While. It's Being Updated, and New Ones Will Be Available In August Of This Year.
Yay.
And I'm done.
Real quick, on the hydrogen fuel cells for buses, and we, we've talked about, you know, pumping hydrogen and pushing it around the Northwest and hydrogen pipelines. And, you know, it's interesting, because hydrogen can actually be split on demand, which always begs the question, I know it comes in different levels and different grades, but it always begs the question, why do we talk about, you know, building pipelines to, to funnel it when we know that we can split it?
I think because the energy required to split it on-site is, is very large, right? If we were going to use the cleanest form of hydrogen, which is taking water and pumping enough electricity into it to split the atoms apart, it's called electrolysis, there's no waste, right? So it's this fantastic future fuel-making process, but you have to have so much power in order to break the molecules apart to generate the hydrogen, that it, it may not end up being the more efficient way to create it, because you'd need so much power. And the power has to come from somewhere.
So the cost would just be too high? It's, it's more cost-effective to, to ship it and?
You remember how in like 1995, cell phones were really big? And now you have a rainbow of cell phones, they're tiny, their batteries last forever, and they can do everything a supercomputer could do 30 years ago? We're in the 90s for bus zero emissions technology. There are so many different brands competing to be the next Apple for bus batteries, or for coming up with a way to develop hydrogen that's clean. So that was something that got talked about during the session, was just, we don't know yet what the right path will be, which technology is going to win out, you know, which one's the Betamax, and we're not going to hear about those guys anymore. So expect a lot more conversation about how we deliver hydrogen, how we create hydrogen, and how we develop these batteries in the future.
Awesome. Thank you. Real quick, I just wanted to give city manager just a moment to, to address one last issue.
Yeah, just to follow up on Councilmember Vasquez's question about tuition reimbursement. It's a $2,000 maximum per, per year for, per employee, and it's a reimbursement program. So they have to provide us notice 30 days in advance of their intent. Then, then, of course, they have to take courses that are related to their, their career, or their profession, or job duties. And then it's a reimbursement program. So once they complete their courses, turn in their paperwork, and if they have, you know, they have to achieve a 3.0 or greater average, then that qualifies for reimbursement. And that's, as I mentioned before, coming up with fall quarter in September. So in August would be the time period, that 30-day requirement, which is what give us indication who may be seeking tuition reimbursement going into the remainder of the year.
Okay, well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda, and I, even though I tried to stretch it out, it looks like we made another record. We are at 38 minutes. Last time we, our record was 41. So it's not very, not a proud record, but nonetheless. And with that, I guess I will just say, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I will call this meeting a journey.